Hello, good afternoon, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started. It's 12:32. We only have half an hour, so I don't want to waste everyone's time. If you have any questions, please go ahead and put them in the chat box at the bottom, and we'll definitely get them answered. I'm just going to mute everyone. Actually, I can't because Dan's in charge. But if you have any questions, please put them in the chat window. We'll get back to them. This is another heads up. We are recording this, so it'll get automatically sent out to folks afterwards. But welcome, and thanks for joining Steve and I, and it was Mike Peruda in his office, and he will do the HR update. But we're going to go ahead and jump right in. And that guys can hear us okay? All right, thank you. All right, so this is just a quick overview of the hospital update that we're going to provide. We're going to jump right into it. So I just want to just read a quick cause for applause. A really terrific, terrific letter we got from a patient order this month. And it states, "Recently, my wife visited the women's imaging center requiring a biopsy. Due to COVID, I was not allowed to go with her, but that did not stop her from sharing her experience with me when I picked her up 90 minutes later. My wife has a beautiful smile, and as she was speaking, that smile was radiating as she shared that each person that interacted with was a 10. No one was better than the other, just all great. Those that performed her procedure explained everything compassionately and answered her questions straight and kindly. Please know how grateful we both are to have had my wife's healthcare situation addressed by such a caring team. Please thank them and let all of them know we are grateful." So just a really great story, and we do get a lot of these notes, and we're doing our best to make sure that everyone sees them and shares them. So congratulate to the women's center and all the staff that cared for this patient, and thank you for taking care of them. Just as a quick note, you, another cause for applause is the National Guard. We've had four National Guard members with us here for about two months, and they're here with us until the end of March. And, you know, Moses, Danielle, Sean, and Dan as well. So terrific guys. They've been helping us, helping us out at the COVID testing tent, printing labels. They're now getting deployed throughout the hospital to help with transport as well as to help as, work as unit secretaries, and, you know, same day and doing, you know, just some extra helping, just another set of helping hands. They're here to help kind of with non-healthcare, with non-patient care issues. So they can help with pretty much anything, but they, you know, they can't go into a patient's room and, you know, withdraw blood or help roll patients or things like that, but really great. We're very fortunate to have them, and this was part of the state's activation plan to help us out with the kind of the shortage of staffing, along with the big demand and volume that we've, we've all seen. So several other Massachusetts hospitals have gotten them, but we were fortunate to have them and really, really done a great job. So if you see them, please thank them for their, their service. Just a quick update on Marlboro Hospital news, and this was, this is an award given to us for Thrive. And throughout the last two years of the COVID pandemic, we've done a tremendous amount of outpatient testing for COVID. And this has been crucial to them being able to kind of run their program safely and efficiently. And they just thanked us for, you know, being there and doing all of the COVID testing as, as we've had the opportunity. The second part is who is the CEO of Thrive, Sean Rose, who was commenting about the work that we've done with COVID, as well as, you know, helping support us in our mass general expansion. And just while I'm touching on that, I'll let Steve talk about the Mass General expansion and the status of that.
Yeah, I know we have Doug on here, who's been a big proponent of the approach that we have taken here. The 10 taxpayer group that we were a part of had until the end of January to provide its response to the state on that. That will get reviewed, and I believe there's a public hearing sometime in early March. And at that point, our 10 taxpayer group will have the opportunity to present its data, its information to the committee. And then based on that, they will take that back and then go from there to make a decision which way it will go. We expect to hear something in the late March to early April timeframe. And as soon as we hear that, we'll make sure we share that with everybody in the hospital so they know what the, 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 the status or result is at that point. So anything you want to add to that, Doug, or no?
No, I think, I think that's a great summary. We're, we're really just kind of in a waiting game at this point, but the more we can kind of continue to educate the public on the severe consequences, the better. And, you know, a lot, a lot of folks at Marlboro have done a great job in doing that. And I particularly thank the share union, who has been very vocal and active, and as has many of our trustees and, and members of staff. So we appreciate it all.
Thank you. All right, a few quick quality update slides, just so people are aware of them. And as I said, we'll send this all out to everyone post presentation later on today. These are our, some of our goals that we're measuring this year, inpatient mortality. As you can see, it's, we really track them from green or red, and we don't have necessarily a target for them. They're, they're gray, but there are things that we pay attention to. So mortality is, you know, the number of patients that are dying and that are admitted to the hospital. And December, you know, we, this number went way up again due to the high amount of admissions that we got specifically around COVID. January, I anticipate that'll be in the red as well. We are doing several things to help address this, as well as we've recently, you know, changed Melody Broad's position over to a full-time social worker. So she's now working very closely with the ICU and the physicians in the hospital to transition patients to hospice. And while she was, while all the case managers were doing this earlier, this has allowed Melody to free up some of her time to, to focus on this. So I anticipate us really making some huge improvements with, with her assistance that she's working with the physicians. PSA 90 is a kind of a roll-up of eight quality metrics, and this one isn't quite where we'd like it. You know, we've had some, some injuries that I can talk to in a moment. We do track patient harm events, and in the month of December, we had six. I have a slide that'll go over them. But our harm events have definitely gone up a little bit, and some of this is around kind of all the closed doors, the staffing challenges that we've had, particularly around having extra staff to be able to answer call lights quickly or to assist with staff. And while this has been a trend here at Marlboro, we are seeing this kind of, you know, at our system, but also throughout the country. It's been a challenging time. We track re-admissions, our length of stay, and, you know, our length of stay for December. And while it's not on the scorecard yet, we anticipate January to be very high based on just the challenge that we've had around getting patients out of the hospital. And then lastly is our patient experience score and willingness to recommend the hospital has continued to deteriorate. And that, once again, is really around just the impact we've seen around the volume, the number, the lack of private rooms, the challenge in getting patients out, the amount of time we've had patients boarding. So as things improve in the hospital, I will be able to kind of see the uptick in scores as well, as well as over time, being able to really start focusing on this and, and allowing, you know, our scores to head in the right direction. And I know everyone's working incredibly hard, and it's just, there's, you know, right now, we're, we're going to make sure that we have enough staff to care for the patients that we have, and we're going to be able to dive deeper into this as, as time goes on, as we kind of correct our staffing. Just as an update, this is the harm events. Has it so six? These are where they happen, pressure ulcers, patient with C. diff, surgical site infection, and two caudis. The pressure ulcers are related to patients that are long time in the ICU. The C. diff, we continue to work on that, and we end up with a few of these every year. As you can see, last year, we had 10 of them, the previous year, we had five. We've done a lot of housekeeping and education around this, so I, I'm hopeful that this will continue to be a, a low number. We'll get back to our fiscal year 20 target. No falls with injury. We continue to have a fair amount of falls, but fortunately, we, they're very, very, they've been very minor injuries like scrapes or complaining of pain. The surgical psych infection was a, you know, a sick patient with an open abdomen, and caudis where some of them are related to the patients that were here for such a long time. So I know everyone's working hard. Clearly not what we'd like to see of having, you know, a total of 10 patient harm events a year to date. So we're going to continue to focus on this and, you know, making sure that patients coming to the hospital do not get, not get injured. And just as a snapshot for everyone, this just kind of validates everything. I'm going to make it a little bit bigger. These are the boarding hours, you know, throughout the system at each hospital. But ours here is circled in red, Marlboro Hospital. And these are the number of hours in January for patients that were boarding in the emergency department, waiting for a bed. And as you can see, this is an all-time record, and anyone who's been here for a couple of years knows that this is something we've paid a lot of attention to over the years. But January and December and October were all kind of new records from historical. We've had the greatest amount of borders we've ever had. So not only has it felt busy, but it has been busy. And, you know, the amount of patients that we've had has just been a tremendous challenge. And, you know, we're all very grateful for all the work and time everyone's put in to help manage this. But that's why, you know, the, the stress that everyone's felt and the, the hard work, it's, it's been real. But this is just an amazing, you know, kind of number, and the amount of work, additional work in patients that have been sitting in the emergency department, and not even able to get upstairs has been tremendous. So, you know, whether it's, to everyone in the hospital, I can't thank you enough for your work and kind of working through all this over the last several months. I'll make this smaller again. This is our patient experience goal. Our target for this year is 62.2. As you can see, you know, since, let me go last, since last, you know, January, we're kind of hovering right around the, you know, the 60 mark. We were making some good progress again prior to our, the most recent surge. And we just really need to get back to the basics for everyone. And, and I think that just alone getting patients out of the emergency department, upstairs to their patient room, keeping it quiet will be a significant improvement. And then as time goes on, and we were able to kind of get some of our regular staff back and reduce the agency and start focusing on, on things that are so important to us and that we're passionate about, that we'll be able to, you know, make some, you know, continued improvements around our, the rest of our quality metrics, but particularly patient experience. Last couple of slides on the hospital update here, piece COVID update. So this is a slide that's from a few days ago. We presented it at our board meeting. But up the top was, you know, the UMass system slide excluding Harrington, and here was Marlboro. The good news today is when, at 8:00 AM this morning, we had zero patients with COVID admitted to the hospital. There was one in the emergency department, but this number was up, you know, to the low twenties again for us at its peak. So as everyone said, you know, this was, it came very quickly, and the drop came very quickly as well. So it's just amazing how, how many COVID patients as a system and as a hospital we had again. And I'm, I'm grateful that the number has decreased, and I'm happy to say that we're sitting at zero at the, at the current moment. Testing update. We continue to stop at the spread testing at our offsite location, Newland Sports Center. And once again, this has been another huge feat and lift by lots of folks involved. You know, since we started, we've tested over 144,000 patients. In the month of, you know, December, January, we had huge volumes, you know, 15 in January, just nearly 20,000 patients. There was days we were testing upwards of 2,000 patients a day, and it was just an incredible operation. And just a needed resource for the community to allow people to go to school or back to work or, you know, to go see a sick parent in a, you know, different place. So thanks for everyone, you know, our contract is until March 30th. And while we're continuing to be open, we have started to reduce our hours because we're testing, you know, right around 200 patients per day. So we're open right now from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM, Monday through Friday, and we're continuing to monitor this. And if we need to, you know, further reduce our hours, we will do so by cutting out days of the schedule. But thanks to everyone that's helped out and participated in this, and it's certainly been, you know, an exciting, exciting ride. I'm going to pass off to Mike Peruda and let him do, talk about the HR updates. And I'll advance the slides for you, Mike. That might be easier when you're ready.
It will be. Thank you, sir. So I'm gonna, these are going to be relatively quick update, but just want to share this with you all. So today, we're going to talk about overall our, our share contract, thank you gift, a reminder about performance appraisals, a reminder to everyone on this call about the referral bonus program, and just a quick mention of the Kronos challenges that we had in January, December into January. So next slide. Please, John. So, oh, sorry, I, I didn't update you. Sorry, I skipped over the share part. So right now, on this slide, thank you. This was just informational. I wanted to let you know that we're actively negotiating both the share contract that expired at the end of last year. In addition, we're on our second negotiating session, official session with the A. Both of these are actually occurring right now. This week, we have active negotiations going on, and things are moving along. All the parties are meeting, exchanging our proposals to each other and counter proposals. And I just want to let you know that is moving along, as well as could be expected, challenging times when it comes to wages and all the other issues in the contract, but that is moving along. So now I can go to the next slide, John. The, this is just a reminder on all of our performance appraisals that are due coming up in March. So this year, when you meet with your supervisor, if you haven't, or your manager, if you already haven't, they're going to discuss both the review of your work from the prior year, 2021 fiscal year, and in addition, some of our goals for 2022. They're going to be arranging meetings with you over the next couple of weeks to make sure that this all gets completed on a timely fashion. And all of this is going to be due about a month from now for final review of your performance. And then we also ask you as caregivers to make sure that you go in and sign your review with your manager or, or you can do it online after the completion of that period. So that'll all be coming due over the next month or so. So your, your engagement with your manager to review your goals and think of, review your work from last year and goals for 2022, that's what will be discussed at the meeting. So I look forward to that, and hopefully we can get that all done in the next month or so. Next item, John. This is just to share with you, I don't have to tell anyone on this WebEx event that there's a challenge in recruiting new caregivers to all of the hospitals. This is a, the national crisis, a state of Massachusetts challenge, and certainly a challenge for us at Marlboro Hospital. But this is just a reminder to every single person who's on this call, every one of us can be a recruiter. Well, except for John and Steve, you don't get the bonus. But all the others who are on this call, all of our caregivers, if you can refer people to our organization and we hire them, there's a base referral bonus of $500. So all you have to do is refer a, a person to us, and they get hired. And then once they're on for three to six months, then you can get your bonus. In addition, for the very hard-to-recruit positions, there's a list on the hub under the referral bonus program. I would strongly encourage you to look at that if you can just help us land someone. All you need to do is steer a friend, a family member who's a nurse, a respiratory therapist, a lab professional, a diagnostic imaging professional, a PCA, that, these are hard-to-recruit positions. If you refer someone, you, you fill out the form, make sure you submit it into the job vike. But when we hire that person, you can get a referral bonus up to $5,000. So it's not just a $500 referral bonus, but this is a way that we're, we can engage with you and ask you to bring more talented caregivers to our hospital by referring them. And there's also something in it for you, and that is the referral bonus. If you have any questions, all you need to do is go to the hub, type in referral bonus, and you'll see there's the description of all the items, the referral bonus documents that you have to fill out, and then the list of all the bonuses that are related to each job. So I would strongly encourage you and, and ask you to help us recruit new members to our family here at Marlboro Hospital. Use this referral bonus program, and you can get a couple of bucks in your pocket while you're referring a, a new person to us, okay? So I hope that you can take advantage of that. And just one other note, we're trying to get new people to our organization. So this will be a referral for a new person who hasn't worked at Marlboro or UMass for the last several years. But if you know of someone who's, who's looking for a job or might like to come and work for us, please refer them. You can get the referral bonus, and they can also get a sign-on bonus. So if you're, any kind of help you can give us in that, we'd appreciate it. Next item. Oh, I think is this?
Is it not you, Mike, right?
It's not me, no. And then lastly, you should have received the, for all those folks who are on board and employees as of November 31 of 2021, you're receiving an email from the system. And in addition, you should be receiving something this week at your home about your gift. That will be something like this vest like I'm wearing today or some other gift that you can choose. So please look for that. There is a timeframe that you, you have until the end of March to fill out and order your gift so it can be sent to you. So please take advantage of that. And all of those reminders went to people's homes and their emails over the last several days. That's it. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, John.
All right, we'll just talk a little bit about our current statistics. So for the month of January as well as year-to-date January, and we'll show you just a little bit on the financials of how we're performing as an organization. It is not the most important thing right now. Obviously, the most important thing was to get through the surge and make sure that we had some balance with the staff, with the patients, with everybody around it. There was a lot of high stress in the community, but, you know, overall, for our, our volumes, while we feel that the hospital was extremely busy, it wasn't busy in a sense of financial performance because the way we get our revenue is based on patients coming in and patients leaving the hospital. And unfortunately, we had enough patients coming in, but we didn't have any patients leaving the hospital. So the long length of stay created lots of stress back to the floors, lots of stress back to the ER because we had a backup throughout the system. We have seen over the last couple of weeks a significant easing in that. I believe as of today, we actually started the day with 10 open med surg beds on Granger II and one or two open beds on Granger I, which historically over the last two months, three months, has not been realistic. So right now, we're doing a much better position. Hopefully, we're able to continue the flow of patients out to alternative settings after their care is done being provided here. But we'll keep track of that. On the ER side, we've been relatively busy through January. We were a little higher than our plan and a lot higher than prior year. However, we were a little bit slower than the previous few months, and that's okay. It's always good to have a little bit of slowdown as long as it, it continues to be in a good situation. On the inpatient and the OR surgical side, certainly we had a slowdown for the month of January. We were on restricted surgical planning for elective inpatient surgeries. And with the higher impact of COVID in the market, a lot of people canceled their outpatient surgeries as well. And we actually, due to some of the census, some of the staffing challenges we had in January, as well as some, some restrictions on other things, had to reduce some other elective outpatient surgeries until we get some of the staff back from their COVID sicknesses. So we did have a, a much lower volume there, and the endoscopy unit was relatively close to being on target. So, you know, you can see the January data. You can also see the year-to-date data. We are down on the ways we count our inpatient volume, which is discharges and observation patients. The number of pure acute care patients coming into the hospital is actually down to prior year, and the psych days are actually down. So those are our key indicators for the inpatient side. The ED visits, up almost 2,000 visits over prior year. It's a very good, strong, positive indicator. And then on top of that, our outpatient OR cases are significantly higher than prior year, as well as endoscopy. So a lot of our outpatient volume has come back, although in January, we did have to restrict some of that. We did see one of the questions that came in about the current status of elective inpatient surgeries. The state has actually gone back from level four to level three, which allows us to do up to 50% of our elective inpatient cases. And because Marlboro Hospital on a normal week only does about seven or eight surgical cases, of which more than 50% come from the ER for emergent, emergent cases, we're only looking at the, the issues of maybe four to five total cases a week that are truly elective inpatients. And because our inpatient bed availability is down, we actually qualify to be fully open and operational today. So our, our facility is at that level, and with the number of cases that we're doing, it's not really an issue for our hospital. So we did answer that. Touching base a little bit on the financial, this is not our focus, but just wanted to share it with everybody, just so you can see what's going on. Overall, I will say the one thing that has been a huge benefit to our organization this year, last year, just in general, has been the value of the stop-the-spread program we've had here. By running that program as efficiently as we have, we've actually been able to generate a little bit of an income off of that program. So that has really buoyed our financials this year. If we did not have that program in place, we would be in some challenging positions, a challenging position like most of the other hospitals within UMass right now. We're all having some, some issues and challenges around the total cost of care. Our salaries, wages, and agency utilization is way up compared to prior years, and we fully expect that to stay up for a little while while we continue to recruit people. Hopefully, we'll be able to get through that in the near term. But as you can see, we do have some people coming in throughout the organization, but we do need to continue to recruit into our markets. Then on top of that, we have lots of purchase services and professional fees. This is related to some of the additional staffing we had through the month of January for additional physicians to support. And on top of that, we have a lot of expenses in the lab for COVID testing, et cetera, going on. So there's definitely some cost pressures in the market, but today, it's not necessarily our 100% focus because overall Marlboro Hospital is doing relatively well in, in, in respect of what's going on in the bigger market. So just wanted to provide an update around that, and you can all look at that at any point that you want to. And this is the, the final slide we will share today. This is just some of the stuff to show, you know, while, while the pandemic's been going on, we still have a lot of work that needs to get done throughout the hospital, a lot of equipment we need to keep purchasing for the hospital, as well as just some general upkeep that has to occur, both the facility and for some of the equipment that's aged in the hospital. This is a summary list of the things that we have spent our capital allocation this year. We have about $3 million, just a little less, of capital for this year. And we have already committed $1.9 million for equipment and $756,000 for facilities. You can see the breakdown here where it is. We are going to do some emergency room and, and lab renovation. We will be looking at whether or not we can expand the ED over the next six to 12 months, but we haven't gotten the project off the ground yet. But we are making some big spins on our ED monitoring system, the Granger I monitoring system, as well as the ultrasound machines that have reached towards end-of-life capacity. as well as the ultrasound machines that have, uh, reached towards, uh, end-of-life capacity. So all in, um, historically, we've always been finishing the year with, um, a, a balance of money to spend. Uh, and we scramble through the months of June, July, and August to identify projects to invest in or upgrade or fix here. This year, we are actually a little behind mainly due to the equipment replacement program that we've had in place, and we've spent a lot of money there. So we only have about two hundred thousand dollars left to make it through the rest of this fiscal year for capital replacements. So, uh, overall, we've done a good job getting that out there, and hopefully, we're seeing some improvements, uh, throughout the facility as this starts to arrive. So that's the end of our presentation, I just want to end by saying, obviously, thank you for all your efforts. I think everybody's done a, a tremendous amount of work over, uh, the past few months, past few years, really. Um, and, uh, it, it, it is something that we just want to acknowledge and, uh, thank you all for it. We do have a few questions that came in, I answered the first one, elective surgery, while I was presenting that. So the second one is, is how are we doing with staffing at Marlboro? Um, this is a, a fifty-fifty question. Overall, we're relatively well-staffed, albeit it's with the wrong mix of, of labor. We really need to make sure we recruit our own labor and get rid of the agency staff. Having the agency, agency staff here creates some challenges on their commitment to our patient satisfaction scores, commitment to our community and how we're doing it. So overall, we're very well-staffed, but right now, we're staffed with a lot of agency to support us. So hopefully, we'll be able to get through that in the short term. Um, and then, that's basically it. Uh, so Ellen just wanted to highlight that the deadline for the caregiver gift is Sunday, March sixth at nine PM. That's when the site will officially close. So you should have gotten your email over the last couple of days, they were sent out in groups, so you wouldn't get it all at the same time. But it is out there for you all to, uh, uh, request a gift. Um, if there are any other questions, please feel free to put them in the question in the window, and we can answer them. But we'll hang on for a few minutes in case there are any, otherwise, that will be the end of our update. All right, not seeing any more questions, I hope everybody has a great day, and we'll talk to you soon. Thank you.